Think this information to its website, has it? Yeah, I'm sorry. H-2D at the top of page 116.
I believe we have, I can double check to make sure.
Okay, I think if we have, I think it'd be good to say that we have in the evaluation.
Put the link.
Or say, and say it in the program, the county has posted its information on the website. Page, wait, did you notice, page 118 at the bottom, H-2K, support self-help housing programs. This is for people like, or probably only people like Habitat for Humanity. But it indicated that the county did not extend the fee resolution and delete it. Is that something that the county might want to reinstate? I was...
So the, there is a standing waiver of fees for Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, there is? Okay.
It's not, it's not, it's a, it's an informal policy, not, yes.
Oh, informal policy, there is...
Well, I think the board adopted.
No, it's not...
It's not, I'm not sure what it was.
Yeah, I don't know either. But they always do it.
It's an action the board did to raise the fee sometime many years ago.
And they always do.
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to say anything about it.
I don't agree with that.
Okay. Then, page 124. Going the wrong way. The Housing Advisory Committee was...
Oh, yeah.
Was not interested, the county's not interested in this at this time. Was that something for lack of interest, or was it just? Sounds as if you might know.
Well, I know a little history on it, we asked for it several housing elements back, I was on a committee. I think George White might have been here during that period. And at that time, it seemed like we were going to get a housing coordinator, and there were a bunch of people who were interested. But I think until you have a housing coordinator and an actual program, you don't really need an advisory committee, so, I don't know. It was never...
It seemed like one of those things that we said we're going to do it, but we've never done it, and so it just seemed like something that maybe we could defer just...
And we need another, I mean, the public can always have input to anything that's going on in these, there's several venues actually for input into this question.
Slowly looking at it realistically, if we do get a housing coordinator, the housing coordinator could probably decide whether he or she wants an advisory committee.
And just for the record, at lunchtime, I got an email from Kristen Stranger, the head of Aces, and we have a meeting tomorrow about, she wants to propose that in the final budget, so.
Good.
Wonderful.
Okay. Yeah. Page 134. Oh, that's right, now these, these are my numbers that I put on your insert pages. So, H-1H, H-1H, infrastructure capacity. I think we ought to start off by saying the county shall continue to work with water. That is just reporting. H-2A, under timeframe annually, and as notice says, needs an S, of funding available are released. And H-2C, as amended. The last sentence of the text, the county shall continue to have this information on its website. And, let's see. All we got there? Heck, that's all I have.
So I have just a couple of things, and there's nothing major, I think we've covered almost everything we've been talking about. On page 50, there's a little section that talks about the disabled, and says, it's in the middle of the page, right above large families, households. Says, "The county has adopted the state's Title 24 regulations that address accessibility," blah, blah, blah. And, and talks about how that, that's going to take care of the problem, but those, none of those regulations apply to single-family housing. So they do nothing. So I don't, you know, it does apply to apartments, or some condominiums. I just, I see a lot that, that we, we, the county, rely a lot on saying, "We've adopted this state standard," and that just takes us off the hook for everything. And maybe it does, that's all we're required to do. We shouldn't kid ourselves that we're doing something more, though.
Well, maybe even more accurate than that, we could say that, at the end of that sentence, which applies to multifamily housing.
Yes, oh...
And then the second sentence would be the same thing, newer housing, newer multifamily housing will at least meet the standards.
Exactly, that'd be fine. Page 70. There's a, the center paragraph, "Under new residential energy standards." Everything beyond implementation of the Title 24 energy standards has, however, created problems, well, actually, even that. Every, that is all so old, I mean, these have been in force now for forever. We should just, "And after additions and alterations must also meet the Title 24 energy standards if they increase the heated or cooled floor space of a building." It's even, applies to more than that, but everything beyond there about that the building department supports this other way of doing it, none of that matters. It's all leftover from some much, much older version of this.
So you're suggesting we strike the latter half of that paragraph?
Yes, yeah. You use software to do it, you can just use the prescriptive method, or you can use the software to prove that you're doing it in a different way. It's, it's a routine standard thing. And our building department has no ability to influence it, so it really doesn't matter.
We will defer to the expert.
Nice having an architect on this committee, knowledgeable architect.
Well, it's just why. And now I don't even remember where I saw this other thing, somewhere in here, we talk about maybe going to Tier Two in Cal Green. I don't think that's realistic in this county, that we'll be able to do that with, as of January, the energy codes are going to be so much more stringent already. That I think we wouldn't want to do that without looking long and hard at what that means. Or unless you were going to provide, the county was going to provide some sort of incentive for being more energy efficient, or more water efficient.
That was Policy H-6D.
So, yeah, I'm fine if we want to look at it, but I don't know that I'd recommend it at this point. But there's also a little discussion in here, which I don't seem to have marked down the page number. That talks about how the county provides information on Energy Star ratings, and lead ratings, and Build It Green, and the county provides no information on any of those, and no encouragement or incentive to do anything more than meet the requirements of the code. I just don't think we should say we're doing it, that's all. We should just take it out, or if we're going to do it, if we want to provide incentives for those things, we should do the same kind of thing, where we say we're going to consider creating some kind of incentives for it, and look into it.
That's H-6A, and it says, "County shall continue to provide information on all those things."
Yeah, the "continue" is what got my attention.
Just take out "continue."
Yeah, if we want to do it, it's all great, but we're not continuing to do it. So maybe just a little rewording is all it needs to be more accurate.
Shall attempt to provide.
May provide. Unless we have a program to, to somehow recognize it, there's not much reason to. The other thing is on page 93 online, it's where it talks about parking standards and possibly changing them. While I'm all in favor of reducing the amount of paving we have out there, I think we have to recognize that this county is so vehicle-dependent, because of how spread out we are, that we want to be careful about doing too much in the land reductions. Like, I remember when we all got on board the whole compact car thing, and we had all those compact parking spaces, and everybody had their big diesel truck, you know?
Where to park.
It was kind of a problem, so, that's all.
Well, did you have a suggestion?
I'm not asking to change anything there, I'm just saying I would want us to be careful about it.
You're watching.
Yeah. Well, it's really easy to see what the state is doing in urban areas, where they're not requiring any parking in some cases, but there's public transportation to get you everywhere, so. I want to say that I actually think that the consultant did a really good job on this, compared to things I've seen in the past, and the planning staff. Seems like all these things that we talked about were pretty picky or new things. So, anything else from the commissioners?
No.
I'm going to give the public one last chance to comment on all the things we talked about. Have any last comments on the housing element?
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Maurer and all the commissioners for what I thought was excellent work on the Title 25 amendment part. Thanks a lot for that, I appreciate the fact that you invited comment, actually listened to it, and put it in the document. And then a couple of things I noticed just today, on page 80, where community plan areas are addressed. I noticed that Valley Springs is included as one of the community plan areas. And that may technically be true at this moment in time, but by the time this housing element is adopted, I believe that will no longer be true. So that's one observation.
I think Mr. Griffey must have stepped out when we had that conversation.
That's possible, either that, or I was distracted.
We're, we're going to be updating those two pages to refer to the new general plan as opposed to the old general plan.
And on page 80, it actually is referring to community centers, not community plans.
No.
Just below that.
Just below that, two paragraphs. So, under, under the 96 general plan, we have a designation known as community center, as well as a rural residential center. There are land use designations on the 96, the land use map. This is referring to the 96 general plan, as we discussed previously.
That's about where you're going to update.
Another observation, or it's possibly a request or a suggestion, on page 137, on H-2G, which addresses encouraging cooperative housing. The way it's worded is a little bit ambiguous, but it, it says that it encourages multiple, oh, I don't even have it, I got caught up, my doctor's finding where you guys were at, now I've lost my place. Takes forever to scroll through 100 pages on one of these things. So, 137. Yeah, thank you. So amended is the zoning code to include cohousing as a permitted conditional use in residential and, residential and/or other zoning districts. And then this is the part that concerns me. Cohousing encourages homeownership in developments containing clusters of small homes generally near services, and including at least one common building where residents can meet, eat, gather, et cetera. And I wonder if it's your intention, or it's the best idea, to so restrictively define what cohousing looks like. Like, I might have said something like, multiple homes on a single parcel, and I would scratch generally near services. And as opposed to including at least one common building where residents can meet, eat, gather, et cetera, might, like, might include a common building, but I'm just curious if you need to, so...
It sounds, to me, as if you might be describing cluster development.
No.
I'm sorry, what?
It's, it's not what you were describing, sounded more like cluster develop, clustering.
No, he was reading it right out of his head.
No, no, I know, but, but in his suggestion.
No, he, that is the definition of cohousing that I understand, and I thank you, I noticed that when I read it, too.
So when you say that's the definition from...
Well, that is traditionally cohousing, there is ownership, but do we want to restrict that, or do we want to allow leasing, or renters, or? And I think that this says cohousing slash cooperative housing, which could be something different than the ownership.
Oh, and it's another one of those with the space between the H and the O and housing.
It seems to me you could, you could say cohousing typically encourages homeownership.
Yeah, and my, my concern with it would be that in the future, the person reading it, or a future planning commission using this to determine a land use application, might say, "Well, your idea of cohousing and what you're trying to do doesn't look like what we have written here," so, anyway, that's my, I tend to, you know, it's pretty mean of me, but I tend to like to watch my government restrict its own options and facilitate expanding those of the public, whenever possible.
Just be, be around when they amend the zoning code for this, and you can...
I'll try.
I, I think that generally near services might not be appropriate here, because I think where the likely locations, these might be larger rural parcels. Where you have somebody who's lived on their property a long time, but now wants to have a community around them, and so. I, I think that's what you're trying to get at, is there aesthetic?
The generally near services part was to allow more flexibility, and, you know, I'm not saying they shouldn't be near services, I just don't think that should be a condition. My name, is that what you want?
No, no.
If you're speaking to the mic, it doesn't give you...
If you're going to talk anymore, you should...
Sorry.
Do it in the mic, so she picks it up.
And as you get up to the mic, it'll say, "I'm sorry, your time's up."
The, one of the last things that you mentioned, Michelle, about the, the information being offered. I would like to encourage the information being gathered, offered, and I think that same area, it was saying something about implementing, you know, support for implementing those kinds of innovations. And I would like to see that actually given some attention. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, cohousing, cooperative housing, it's three.
We can make it less restrictive if we just say cohousing typically encourages homeownership. And then we're not, it doesn't look as if we're defining it's a descriptor.
I think that leaving the cohousing there, as long as we understand that the cooperative housing could be something different.
Well, that, then, then you have in the first sentence, by saying cohousing, paren, cooperative housing, sounds as if we are saying it's the same thing. So you can say include cohousing or cooperative housing.
Well, I'm saying the title, it says cohousing.
Yeah, I know.
It says cooperative housing, we don't define cooperative housing.
Yeah, I, I sort of took that as being, that's what cohousing means.
Yeah, I think cooperative housing could be different than cohousing. Cohousing is, is, is an actual thing that has become a particular program.
Yeah.
So I think people, there's a general understanding of what cohousing is, and I, they are, it is cooperative housing, but I think that our term cooperative housing could be a more generic for any kind of multiple homes on a single piece of property, you know, where that's allowed.
Well, if it's two different things, we should not have cooperative housing in parentheses right after cohousing.
I don't see it in parentheses.
No, not, not in the title, in the first sentence.
Oh, you've got a different, you've got the newer version, I should have slid it in.
No, it's the same.
"The county shall amend the zoning code to include cohousing," parentheses, "cooperative housing."
Cooperative housing.
So, you know...
Yeah, you're right.
You could take out the parentheses and say "or," or you could leave out cooperative housing.
Well, I think we do want to allow more creative versions of shared...
Then I would take, take out the parentheses and put the word "or" in between.
Yeah, I think that...
Why don't you do that, take out the parentheses, put "or," and just strike the last sentence. You don't need it.
You can define them somewhere else.
Well, it says it encourages homeownership, and so, generally near services, then it gets more restrictive. It looks to me like it's just causing more trouble than it's worth.
Right, and the zoning ordinance is going to implement it anyway, most likely, or conditions, because it's conditional use, right?
We'll have to address that when we get there.
So I guess really we should say cohousing and/or cooperative housing, because we're talking about including it, we don't want to say...
Not just one or the other.
Yeah.
What's the difference? I mean, way I, way I read it, I have to take it like Peter's, the same thing, it's all three or co.
Cooperative, cohousing, that, that term means a specific kind of development. Where there is a central building, and then small homes around it, and it's, you generally buy into that development, you own a percentage of it. It is a particular type of development, whereas cooperative housing could be any kind of, a boarding house could be cooperative housing.
We, we're going to define that when we develop...
Exactly.
Yes, when you get the zoning, so, so and/or cooperative housing?
I'm, I'm okay with deleting that second sentence.
Yeah, but in the first sentence, say cohousing and/or...
And/or, yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, I think we are done with public comments, back to the commission, and where are we, Peter?
Well, I've got a long list of minor edits, as well as a handful of other work, you know, that we need to refine the language here or there. The question I have for you then is, do you want me to just make those changes and forward it on to the board, or do you want me to bring it back to you?
I don't, I don't, I'd, I'd be fine with you taking it directly to the board. And then we can gripe at you.
Yeah, so we can come to the board, be...
But if you want to bring it back, that's fine.
I, I think in terms of timing, we have time for it to come back, because it can't really, all the edits can't be made until the general plan is adopted, right? In case there are any changes there.
Well, I think we can, the, the pages, about 80 and 81, I think where we refer back to the current general plan, and we're sort of in that weird transition stage of going between them, assuming the board will adopt what you've recommended to them. It would be easy enough to make that change, and I could just simply hold off, and, you know, scheduling this until after the board has actually adopted the...
Yeah, I, I think I can just change what I just said, I think, I think just to protect you, you should bring it back to us, and...
And expect that there will be very little...
Very little.
Very little discussion.
I'll have a half an hour, not three hours.
You guys got that very little comment next time.
I'm sure, I'll, I'll hide some errors and...
Yes.
I'll let Tim and Kelly find out.
If you come up with a word that spells Kelly backwards, or a few other little word games.
So our direction to staff is to make all the little micro-changes and update it, and bring it back to us whenever, whenever you think it's appropriate. And if you want us to get it approved, you know, in the next, as soon as you can get that done, and then you'll be ready to go to the board.
What if we continue it to the next meeting? That way we don't have to re-advertise those who are here, hear that, bring it back, and then I could make these edits very quickly.
So if you could do that on new underlinings and cross-outs to show what your changes are for this, for today, that'd be great. We only need to know the pages, see the pages.
Yeah, I, I think what I'll do is just print those pages where changes were made.
Yeah, right. Yep.
Okay. We are ready to move on to the next item.
So I think we need a motion to continue this to the August...
I make a motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second it as soon as the date's stated.
Paul, in favor of continuing this to our next meeting?
August 8.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we're finally going to talk about complete streets, sorry, guys. Now we're finally going to talk about Complete Streets, sorry, guys.
Could you give me a moment to get settled and get. We have a presentation here, with me is Tanya Sundberg from Placeworks, who was a consultant that was hired by COG to prepare the plan. I think that her presentation will cover anything that I wanted to say, so.
We will not need to talk anymore.
Thanks, Peter, and good afternoon, Chair Plotnick, members of the commission, thanks for listening to this presentation today. As Peter noted, I'm from Placeworks, my name is Tanya Sundberg, I'm also a resident of Murphy's, I've lived in Murphy's for the past three years, so it's been particularly cool to be able to work on this project in the town I live in. So this is a cooperative, this project is a cooperative effort between the county and the Calvarus Council of Governments and Caltrans. As Peter mentioned, this project was funded through a Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant, also the, the COG provided a local match. And we have Kevin Schroeder here in the audience, he's from Caltrans, he's been, we've been working closely with Kevin and his team through the development of this, Caltrans fully supports, Caltrans has been, you know, coordinating with us and is, is a part of this project. So the main kind of function of this project is to develop this Complete Streets Plan, which is focused on identifying improvements along the Highway 4 corridor in Murphy's that will improve bicycle and pedestrian safety, and then to kind of prioritize among those improvements what needs to be done first, and develop kind of a clear implementation plan, and to do all of that with a significant amount of community outreach and engagement, so that ultimately the plan represents what the community wants for the future of this corridor. And because it has so much community involvement and engagement, and because it lays out all those implementation pieces really clearly, that makes the county and the COG a lot more competitive for future grant funding to actually implement and construct these improvements that are included in the plan. We did have an advisory committee for this project, Chair Plotnick was one of our advisory committee members, I'll mention, look over that a bit more detail in a few minutes, and we had a website, murphy'scompletestreets.com, which was a great tool that we used throughout the process, mainly to engage the members of the community. And also, so Amber Collins is here from the COG as well, so we have another representative from the team. So the project is focused on the Highway 4 corridor running through the, kind of what we think of as Murphy's, which starts at the east end, sorry, the west end around Feeny Park, and going to the east end up around Apple Blossom Road, which is basically right before the road starts heading up into the mountains. And we also extended the study area along a couple key roads that intersect Highway 4, including Penn Gulch, and that kind of triangle that's created through the Big Trees, Main Street, and Jones Street, going out to that four-way stop that's at the edge of the downtown. So early in the process, we identified these goals for the project that are shown on the slide. It's, as I said, it's about creating safe pedestrian and bicycle connections, particularly to Michaelson Elementary School, as well as some other key destinations on the corridor, improving safety for all modes, so that it's safe to not just drive, but also walk and bike. We also wanted to create a better sense of cohesiveness and connectivity to Main Street Murphy's, there's kind of a disconnect now between Highway 4 and down, and Main Street, so that's part of the project, engaging community members, as I said, and establishing clear gateways at each end of town, so you know when you're in Murphy's, when you're not, and beautifying the corridor and slowing traffic. We started this project in December of 2017 with an existing conditions analysis. After that work was done, we had our first round of community engagement, where we introduced the project to the community and started to get some ideas about what, you know, what the issues that the community wanted to see addressed would be. Then we developed some alternatives that would, that identify potential improvements to address those issues, brought those back to the community last summer, and asked them to say, you know, which, which of those alternatives they would like to see included in the plan, then we prepared a preferred alternative, what the community wanted, presented that to the community last fall, and at that meeting, we also asked them to tell us what of, what of those improvements are the most important to do early and first, and so that was helpful with prioritization. Since then, we've been finalizing the plan, and we're in the review and approval phase here in the summer, so we're at the very end of the process. So one of the key issues and opportunities for this project that I want to highlight is the State Highway Operations and Protection Program, with the acronym SHOP. This is a Caltrans program, and their, Caltrans, through this program, Caltrans has identified and funded a project to install a two-way left turn lane on Highway 4 between Penn Gulch and Main Street. So that project is funded, it's currently in its design and environmental review phase, and will be constructed within the next couple of years, so that's kind of a done deal. And it's a, but it's a great opportunity to build from, because there's a lot of infrastructure and work going into that area, and so part of the impetus for this project is to think about how can we expand that, and, and do more with a strong community engagement, uh, planning process to help figure out what, what those would be. So that was a big trigger, and then also, early in the process, through our existing conditions analysis, we identified some issues and opportunities that I want to highlight. We conducted an analysis of the demographic data, which clearly showed that there are people who live in Murphy's who either can't or don't have, can't drive or don't have access to a car, and so there are, there's definitely a need for, there to be safe places for people to walk and bike. We did a walkability and bikeability analysis that showed that a lot of the places where people, places, people live in close proximity to places like the school and downtown, and you should be able to walk or bike there fairly easily, just based on distance, but they, the, the, those roadways lack the appropriate infrastructure to make it safe for people to do that. We noted there was some uncoordinated signage along the corridor, we, we looked into some of the on-street parking concerns, our, we conducted a collision analysis that looked at historic collisions, vehicular collisions along the corridor, and find that there was a cluster of collisions at the Penn Gulch and Highway 4 intersection, also at the Feeny Park area along Highway 4, so those were some things we noted and, and tried to address through the project. Our engineer conducted analysis, basically noted that there's a lack of facilities and along the corridor, so a lot of that was what, what we were intending to address through this project. As I noted, outreach is a huge part of the project, and just a summary of that outreach is shown here. Our advisory committee met five times, and was really fundamental in keeping this process on track and moving in the right direction. That advisory committee was made up of 12 people from various, you know, stakeholder groups, there was a representative from the sanitary district, lots of business and community group representatives, as well as the school principal, and parents, and residents, and people interested in other aspects of the project. We also had three community workshops. The first workshop, we had a walking tour, where we split up into groups and walked different segments of the corridor, asked people to say, you know, what are the issues we need to address, start to talk about how we could address them. Then we had those other workshops, as I mentioned earlier, we, where we asked people at the, from the community to say, what are the important, you know, which are, which improvement options do you want to include in the plan, and then how do you want to prioritize them? We had what we call pop-up events, where we went out to where people in the community were already meeting, we went to the Chicken in a Barrel event that the Parents Club puts on, we went to a First Friday, and the Grape Stomp, all just as a way to kind of maximize the input in the process. We also had a parent survey early on, in coordination with Michaelson, and a website. So that's kind of an overview of the process and what we're trying to accomplish. Now I'm going to go into the kind of core of the plan, which is the, the set of improvements that are identified in the plan, and then we'll wrap up with implementation. So I don't expect you to read this, the text on this slide, but this gives you a sense of how, how things are distributed, and generally, we kind of broke the corridor into these, the central part of Highway 4, which runs from Penn Gulch up to the Big Trees and Tom Bell intersection, and in law, along that section, we're focused on providing sidewalks on each side of the road with a buffer landscaping strip, along with bike lanes, buffered bike lanes, some improved and new pedestrian crossings that I'll show you in a few slides, street lighting just at some key intersections, and taking that SHOP project, that put in this two-way center turn lane up to Main Street, extending that all the way up to the Big Trees intersection. And then outside of the central part of the corridor, we're focused more on using what's the side path, which is a wider path than a sidewalk, but it's two-way, you can have multidirectional travel on it, and it's more separated from the roadway. Here's a cross-section of these, of these approaches, the SHOP project is shown in the upper left, that, that is where we're kind of building on to get to the lower, this section here. So this is, this is the central part, where we've got the central turn lane, the travel lanes, buffered bike lane, landscape strip, and sidewalk. And then outside the central part, this is the side path approach, so that's kind of what it looks like. Okay, so I'm going to go through segment by segment, just hi, just hitting some of the highlights of each segment, starting at the west end of the project, Feeny Park is right here, these are the ballfields. So this, in this segment, we're going to do enhanced shoulders along the, along the edge of each side of the road, which is basically a wider road with a rumble strip to alert drivers that if they start to go out off the roadway. We're also, there's this informal parking area that people use at the ballfields already, and so this plan includes this kind of formalizing that, making it clear how you get in and out, to try to address some of the collision history that we saw in that area. Nor, sorry, east from there is the Penn Gulch Road intersection, so this is a really critical part of the plan because of the need for safe access to Michaelson Elementary. Michaelson is right here, and this is the existing Penn Gulch intersection. So we have two phases for this part of, for that particular intersection, in the first phase, we'd install what's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon, and that's a, really similar to what you have right now at the Bret Hart High School parking lot, where if a pedestrian wants to cross the highway, they would press a button, and that would activate the signal, and so it would turn from, it would turn to yellow, and then red, and cars would stop until the pedestrian has crossed, and then it would go back to no signal. So that's kind of an in-between approach, and then as a, as a phase two, ultimately in the future, if warranted through analysis, then a full traffic signal would be installed at that intersection. And then down Penn Gulch, we have a, a side path going from the intersection to the school. There's an existing crosswalk here that we'd improve with some new crosswalk markings on the north side, and then also some shade trees to be planted to address some glare issues that parents noted, and this is a visual simulation of what that intersection would look like after installation of these improvements. So then we move into kind of north of, or sorry, east of Penn Gulch, we have the, as I noted earlier, we have the sidewalks on both sides that are buffered with this, with the bike lane, that's a big part of this section. We also include this new crosswalk across Highway 4, this would be another opportunity for people to cross, right now you can cross at Penn, there's a crosswalk at Penn Gulch and a crosswalk at Big Trees, but there's nothing in between, and so this would give a kind of relief for that need. Then we'd also add in the crosswalk across where Main Street turns on to Highway 4 with a pedestrian refuge island, and some other smaller improvements in that area. Then moving up to the Big Trees Road, this is Big Trees Road intersection, this is where the existing traffic signal is. So through this section, we'd continue the sidewalks and bike lanes, we'd also extend that SHOP, that center two-way left turn lane that the SHOP project had included for the, the other area. And then at, at this intersection, we would be adding crosswalks on all four legs, they're currently on only two legs of that intersection. This curb would be extended, basically to tighten that intersection, make it so cars have to go a little slower through it, making it safer for people to walk. And then this area here would, would have a new gateway sign directing people to down, historic downtown Main Street Murphy's, also some landscaping to kind of beautify that intersection. And then as you continue down, this is Creekview Road, this is a way that a lot of the residential area back here accesses, you know, this, the Sierra Hills Shopping Center and other services here, and the post office down here, so right now, there's not a clear way for people to walk, and so we'd add a crosswalk here, a new sidewalk on this side of Big Trees, connecting to a new crosswalk, mid-block crosswalk, to where there's an existing sidewalk on the other side of Big Trees Road, so that would give people a clear way to access some of those services. And then at the east end of the project area, east of Big Trees Road, we'd use the enhanced shoulders approach, similar to the other end of the study area, and then we'd also add the side path here to connect up to William Street, and that would go behind the California Highway Patrol Way Station, there is an easement there for the adjacent development, and so there's an opportunity to install a side path there. Oh, and then the final section is, is kind of off Highway 4 corridor, this is, this is the four-way stop at Main Street, let's see, this is, this is Main Street, this is Big Trees Road, and this is Scott Street and Jones Street. So this is the main four-way stop as you come into Main Street Murphy's. We'd add crosswalks on all four legs of that intersection, we'd add a continuous sidewalk on the north side of Main Street, on Jones Street, there would be a gravel path here and class three bike route signage, and then we'd do some sidewalk improvements on Big Trees Road. So those are the improvements that were identified, we brought those to the community last fall, and we asked them to tell us which ones, which of those improvements are the most important to get on right away. And so we had them rank the projects numerically, and then we tallied all those results and came up with a clear, you know, pretty clear tally of what's most important to the community. And then what we did is we grouped those into what we called implementation packages. So those, each package is, goes in order of priority, and they, they, they are based on those community preferences, with some adjustments to make sure that those packages make sense to have together, so you, geographically, you want to have the same kind of set of improvements together, and things that kind of work in concert with each other. And then also, we set this kind of size, the total cost of what it would take to construct that implementation package, we had to size that appropriately for the kinds of funding opportunities that will be used for it, so, so that's how we came up with these packages. Just real briefly, Package A is the top priority, this is related to school safety, and so it includes the pedestrian hybrid beacon at Pennsylvania Gulch, and the side, the side path to connect to the school, and those crosswalk improvements, so that's really getting at one of the fundamental goals of the project, it's very competitive for grant funding, and so it is a top priority. Package B is the package that kind of extends that further east along Highway 4 with the sidewalks to Main Street, the full traffic signal at Penn Gulch, and those Main Street and Highway 4 intersection improvements, including the new crosswalk at Main Street, and that's also very competitive for grant funding. Package C is taking that central main up to Big Trees Road, so it's the sidewalks and bike lanes on Highway 4 up to Big Trees Road, and then those intersection improvements at the Big Trees Road and Highway 4 intersection. Then Package D is focused on that, how we connect to the downtown, connect the Highway 4 corridor to the downtown, so it's those Creekview Road inner, area improvements, and this is something that's possible, it's definitely eligible for some grant funding, but it also could be helped with some local development, impact fees, or even incorporated into some county maintenance funds. Package E is focused on bringing people, yeah, this is focused on the gateway signage, and it's kind of a standalone gateway sign package, and this is something that's a little more challenging to get and for grant funding, but there's definitely some interest from the local business community, and that could be something that could be pushed and, and funded in that way, or it could be consolidated into a larger grant with a local match. Package F is the side path behind the CHP Way Station at the east end of the project area and the enhanced shoulders, and that's also a potential, it's definitely something that could be subject or eligible for grant funding. Package G is about the, the other end and the west end of the project, near Feeny Park, formalizing that parking area, and doing the enhanced shoulders in that area. And then Package H is the lowest. And then Package H is the lowest priority and that's the most outer part of the project, which is, we looked at adding some Class Three Bike Route signage on the east end of Pen Gulch past Feeny Park and also on Six Mile Road out to Ironstone is another area we looked at. So those are, those are the kind of lower priority, but still important to the community package. So since we published the draft general, sorry, the draft Complete Streets Plan and since you received your packet, there have been some public comments received, so I just want to summarize them. We've, there have been some corrections made to some of the historic data that we show in the plan. And so we're going to be making those corrections before this goes to the Board of Supervisors. And then there are some general kind of questions and comments, as well as a suggestion about, one of the comments was specifically to take that part of the plan that showed that we'd formalize that parking area at Feeny Park on Highway Four, take that out and not allow any parking there at all. So that's a specific comment to consider. And then also a comment that we should add to, we have diagrams that show pedestrian comfort and that we should show sidewalks on those diagrams. So it's kind of a clarification request. So finally, this project is determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And so the staff has recommended that you adopt the resolution before you to recommend that the board adopt their resolution to certify the CEQA exemption and adopt the plan. Thank you for listening. Happy to take questions.
Anybody have any questions for Tanya here?
I do. But first, before I start questioning things, I want to say this is just a gorgeous plan. It's, the people I know in Murphy's looked at it and said, when do you get the shovels out? When are we going to do this? So I'm very, have a very positive reaction to the plan. I am concerned about the Feeny Park Foundation's comments about their, the formalizing the informal parking along the fence and Highway Four. And they do recognize that it needs to be accessible to emergency vehicles. And I don't know, I assume that you got this input from them during the course of the project. And I guess my question is, why do you have the formalized parking there?
I think this was sort of a mixed bag. I guess as far as disclosure, I should admit that my wife is a Feeny Park supporter.
I got to laugh. I got it.
But we have not influenced each other in any way, part of the project. This was something that had been discussed and it wasn't a unanimous claim that this was a good idea. I think the majority of the public, the people involved in the planning aspect, the public workshops and the advisory committee were split, but most felt it, it's being used, it should be used. I think that as the park board had a more thoughtful review of the plan, they said, you know, we'd really prefer to see, as they mentioned in their letter, to see people use the internal parking lot and reserve that access for emergency purposes only. And so I think there's a different, the community felt one way, the park board felt a little differently.
It seems to me that, I mean, the question would be, so however much you formalize the parking off of Highway Four, unless you put tire spikes, people are going to park there anyhow. So I guess, my guess would be that you've formalized it so it will be safer than it is now and safer than it will be if people continue to use.
Well, that was sort of the thought process, was that if it's going to be used, again, it's a lower priority item and it may or may not ever get built. But if it's going to be used, it should be made safe and have a designated encroachment onto the highway. You know, right now it's sort of haphazard. There have been a, you know, history of accidents there, people pulling out, the site distance isn't great. And so we felt, the conclusion of the team was that if parking was going to occur there, it ought to be formalized. The other alternative is to close it off entirely, put a barrier up so people cannot park there.
And then that makes it difficult for the emergency vehicles to access it. We also are aware, the whole group that looked at this was aware, that even getting a permit to do that is going to be a challenge. It's a tricky little spot. Kevin's here. So it might not be feasible anyway, but we feel like people park there. I mean, you're going to be hard pressed to keep people from parking there or from parking across the street and running across and trying to come in through there.
If you had a clearly signed emergency parking only, perhaps people wouldn't do the informal parking, but.
You'll have to come to Murphy's.
Yeah, I understand.
Hang out for a bit, see what they think of signs.
Okay. Well, speaking of signs.
I think your other idea, the strips, the tires.
That might be a factor.
The other thing to consider, and it sort of goes hand in hand with the exemption, is this does not commit the county or county to a course of action. This is, these are sort of an idealized set of improvements that we could make. Each improvement will be subject to its own environmental review, its own discussion, analysis of, you know, either the Caltrans or the county, the school district, whoever has the authority to make the improvements. Will have to look at that and decide, yes, this is appropriate to do. Here's the detailed planning that needs to be done for that specific construction project. And so I think that, you know, keeping it in the plan doesn't necessarily say, this is what we're going to do. It's just that if, if, when we get to that point and we say, let's look at it, here's how it would fit. And if there's funding availability, if we end up deciding, yes, this is what we should do, then having it in the plan would assist us with funding for that in the future.
And once you implement the first couple pieces of the plan, it might be time to update the plan and at that time we'll have a better feel. It also included a sidewalk down to that gate area and made, so it wasn't just that it was improving it for the cars, it was also improving for walking.
Well, that's, yeah, and that's wonderful.
So Kevin Shor, Caltrans, the reason, in our opinion, we kept it in there is because it's been historically used from the community. So we didn't want to feel like this plan would take anything away currently that they use. It just gave an option that when we could have another discussion with Peter, how it works, that if maybe we come through with a SHOT project and we're looking to do shoulder expanding, at the same time, do we do an informal parking? If not, we could revert to just, we call it K-Rail, but put some kind of barrier up to stop them. So it just keeps the open discussion going. Because if we don't have it in there, we'll just go and do the shoulders and that's it.
While you're there, on the SHOT plan, is that a scope?
SHOP.
SHOP. It isn't clear to me, from the diagrams or the plates in the book, why, it's clear that from Highway Four to Pen Gulch, there's some part of that middle straight, middle lane that is dedicated to a left turn to Pen Gulch. They said there are left turn arrows.
Explain what the new project is.
Okay, so what you like, so from Pen Gulch, where you could take a left onto it, that's where the two-way left-hand turn lane will start, all the way to Main Street.
But see, that's my question, is it, if it's a two-way left turn lane all the way from the Pen Gulch intersection to Main Street, which your view, figure 4.6 shows that it's a dedicated left turn lane to get from Highway Four to Pen Gulch.
No. It's a dedicated center lane on the highway.
Yes, but it's, it has left turn signals, not, not both ways.
It's not just for Pen Gulch though. It's a.
Oh, I understand that. No, my concern is, let's get back to really my bottom line, is that I often am coming on Highway Four and I'm making a left turn on to Main Street. I want to have at least part of that lane be dedicated to left turns onto Main Street, not a arrows going both ways as I'm approaching Main Street in that center lane.
So you're asking for more of a visual to show that the left turn pocket entering into Pen Gulch is only for left and people should not be turning into that as they do a left turn.
Yeah, and, and at the other end of the thing too, it went going from Four on to Main Street.
Okay.
Should be, the very end of that should be left turn only. Or you have the real problem of cross-traffic.
I can take that comment back, but I'm trying to visually think about it. I believe like Main Street, I guess, actually, we have Lawrence Street on the right and then Main Street on the left. We have to kind of keep it dual purpose, that someone can turn right or left. If we sign it just for left, people do not believe, or, that's not the, how am I trying to explain this?
What I'd like to see is that under that red car, there being a left turn.
You don't want the double turn, you just want a left turn arrow.
Yeah, right at the, at the end there.
Okay, so we can make note of that and I'll make sure I go back to my project managers and make that request.
Because if you go back to figure four points, four dash six on page 59. You've got, I guess, can we have that up on the screen?
I don't have, oh, this is the, yeah, I think it's, no. I don't have that, that particular one in the presentation.
Okay. Anyhow, it shows two left turn arrows for people to get over into that middle lane and make a left turn on to Pen Gulch. I'm just asking that the same thing be done at Main Street.
What I can ask is when we get closer with this project, I'll see if we can actually provide a signage plan for the striping and present it to Peters to show you or anyone like that as the project gets closer.
So again, this, this plan is sort of general in nature as far as, you know, the specific design of this will have to meet all of Caltrans standards as far as left turn requirements, spacing between driveways, all of that kind of stuff that's necessary. So it may well be that it will only be left turn only at those ends. That's going to depend on the criteria that Caltrans has, their design requirements.
Then one, one concern that I've had from Murphy's residents was that having the light at Tom Bell and the light at Pen Gulch, unless there's some good coordination, on Sunday evenings, why, there's a real backup coming down Highway Four at the, at the light at Tom Bell. And we weren't clear as to how the lights could be coordinated, so you're not going to end up with a whole bunch of traffic crammed into trying to get past those two intersections in order to continue down the hill.
For when, when the signal potentially would come in. It didn't need to be coordination. We always make sure that the two signals do go green together for 30 seconds, 60 seconds, whatever it might be, we do make that coordination.
Is it something that can be, and that, can that be tuned to particular times of particular days?
I remember we talked about that actually being a paddle thing. So it's when someone was there and needing to get across to the school, they would activate it and most of the time it would be allowing through traffic.
Right, sorry, I, sorry, I thought Tim was talking about when a full signal comes in at Pen Gulch, that at, when a full signal come in, comes in, we will make sure that both Big Trees and Pen Gulch are signalized together and that they are timed for weekends or during travel peak hours and stuff like that. We can modify that.
Great.
Obviously, we're not there yet, so that is a no. We always will reach out and see what is best.
It can be done.
It can be done.
That's correct. Then my other concern is that the island at Main Street, so I think you're off the hook for the, Main Street and Big Trees, the pedestrian island. I don't know, can you put up page 69 up there? I mean, you've got it up there in the corner.
Main Street and Big Trees, yeah. I think this is the Main Street, Big Trees intersection.
Yeah.
Right here.
Anyhow. Main Street, Big Trees and Scott.
Yeah, this is Big Trees, this is Main and this is Scott.
Okay, and with that pedestrian island, which as a pedestrian, I think is a wonderful idea, but I don't see how people are able to make a left turn from Main onto Big Trees Road without going into the opposite traffic or going way around that island.
It's not an island, it's, it's graphics.
It's graphics on there.
Well, so it's flat.
They were suggesting some kind of design in the, where the weird crosswalks all come together, Tanya.
Yeah, and, and as Peter mentioned earlier, that, you know, these are conceptual still, those, those very detail level where, you know, we need to make sure we have adequate turning radius, all of that will come in and when this project is actually.
As it is now, I'd say it's unworkable without people going across that graphic.
Yeah, we do have several islands that are, or aspects of the roadway that are either painted or mountable to ensure that all the vehicles can get through.
I'd suggest you do nothing that's paintable that is susceptible for traffic to use. I mean, the way it is now, why, people would have to drive across that graphic in order to get from Main Street onto Big Trees. And it would also, people coming on Main Street and turning onto Scott, if you have a truck making a big delivery to, to the winery, they'd have to go across that. So it, it just seems to me you might move your, move your crosswalk that crosses Main Street up a little bit and do away with your graphic island because certainly don't want to encourage pedestrians to feel safe somewhere where they're not.
Yeah.
Okay.
I never thought that that was supposed to be a safety island. I thought it was, at one time, there was a discussion about just choosing, making something pretty that seemed Murphy's-like. It wasn't trying to keep people from driving on it.
Well, in effect.
At the center stage, we were talking about.
If you have a crosswalk feeding into it and you're still out in the middle of the street, why, it has that effect. Okay, I'm, I'm, anyhow, I think it's a great design, except for that.
Take a look, yeah.
On the footprint of the existing roads, how much wider are the improvements going to be and do you, have you acquired, do they fall within the easements or have you acquired the appropriate land to do all the improvements?
I think there's adequate right-of-way available for the improvements. It's something that we looked at in the planning phase. Not all of it is paved though, so the pavement would be extended, but there wouldn't need to be any sort of land acquisition from private property.
I have a number of questions. One of the goals was to slow traffic on Highway Four. Now, which recommended improvements will slow down or stop the traffic on Highway Four? It looks like the crossing of Highway Four with a pedestrian-on-demand beacon to stop traffic, Phase One, and a traffic signal, Phase Two, at Pen Gulch, that's one of them. There is an existing crosswalk there, isn't there?
At Pen Gulch, yeah.
Across Highway Four.
Yep, yep.
How often is it used?
Not often. I mean, given that it's next to a school, it's surprisingly low how much it's used, but the school actually discourages students from using it because of a history of safety issues. And so I think with, with the improvements that are identified in the plan, the hope is that it would be significantly increased in usage.
Okay. Another one would be a, a new pedestrian crossing of Highway Four at Main Street.
Correct.
That would be new. And that would slow down traffic.
Yeah. I, just, I think to clarify, I, I think all of these improvements work in concert to slow traffic. When people, when people are driving through town and they see people walking and biking along the side of the road, that inherently is going to make them slow down. So when, when there's not facilities and people aren't out there, then people will tend to speed. But once, it's, you know, a little bit of a chicken and the egg thing, but once you get the improvements in place, more people will be there and that will inherently slow traffic. Also, there's, you know, just seeing those amenities and the buffering on the side of the road and even, I think we've even included some slightly narrower travel lanes. All those things kind of work together to just, you know, intuitively, drivers would slow down. But we don't have like a reduced speed limit sign or something really concrete that, that addresses that.
And then there would be new crosswalks and a curb extension at Highway Four and Tom Bell.
Correct.
And Big Trees. And that would slow traffic.
Correct, yeah.
And with what you've mentioned, that's pretty much it for slowing traffic. And with what you've mentioned, that's pretty much it for slowing traffic.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I see it all as a package that inherently works together to slow traffic, but, but yeah, all of those, all of those contribute to, to doing that.
And the, the speed limit there is what, thirty-five?
Yes.
What was the average speed? It says it in here, forty-six or something.
Oh, I don't have it off the top of my mind, but yeah, it's, and when you, when you, you know, I, I go through that area quite often and you can tell that people are doing that.
Take the conscious effort to slow down through the speed limit.
There, there's a big concern in Murphy's with people that live there, that that center turn lane is going to speed traffic up. And that, just because it's, you know, a bigger, wider, more open pathway and that it will deter people from crossing the highway, good and bad. I mean, people need to get from side to side. We don't want them to run grab of their car to drive for a block and a half. So that instigated a lot of this, like how, how can we slow it down? I think there are suggestions of the plantings and the separated walkways and all of that, just the general overall ambiance should help to slow down traffic. But they also looked at some of the other kinds of measures that you could use like roundabouts, but really there's not good space in the locations that we might want to consider them to do that, so Tony probably could.
Sure, yeah, we did, we did do a conceptual layout of roundabouts at Penn Gulch, Main Street and Big Trees, and there were some space constraints. They would require some acquisition of private property and, you know, and, and there was a, a real mix of the level of support from the community. Some people were definitely interested in pursuing them, but a lot of people weren't. So I think the combination of not a strong consensus that we wanted that, plus the, the, you know, space considerations led us to not include that in the plan.
He also looked at tightening the radiuses in a couple of locations to force people who are going to make a turn, like Tim who's racing down Highway four and he wants to get onto Main Street in time for something, I don't know, with the barbecue. And so from his left turn lane, to force that all of those turns to be a little slower.
Okay, the, the, the plan has a summary of the community engagement that was done. It describes the outreach, outreach techniques that were used to engage the community. But what outreach, if any, was done to engage the people who regularly travel Highway four through Murphy's, who use it as a through highway but don't live in Murphy's?
So there wasn't any targeted outreach for people who aren't living in Murphy's and traveling through. However, I think a lot of the, we did, the, the community workshops were advertised as, you know, as, as best as we could, but then these, I think the, the best opportunity we had to reach that audience was probably through our pop-up events. We went to First Friday in the Park where a lot of people from the whole region will come and enjoy music and, and, and fun at the park. And then we also went to the Grape Stomp, which takes in a lot of regional travel and talked to people about the project there. So we, and we, part of those events, we were trying to just advertise like come to our workshop that's coming up so we can get more focused input, but also we took input at those events too. So I think that was probably the best way we could reach the, we're regional audience. But it, it was definitely, I'd say that the input that we received was really focused on mainly Murphy's community members.
Do, do any of these proposed projects that would, the crosswalks and so forth along Highway four, that have to satisfy Caltrans requirements as being warranted, are they now warranted under existing conditions?
So there was a warrant analysis conducted for the Penn Gulch and Highway four intersection. I think under, under existing conditions today, there is a warrant for a signal to be installed, but when our, our modelers looked at it with the new shop project installed, which we know is going to happen, that actually took us out of that bracket. So it's, so we, in our consideration, it's not actually warranted now because we know this project is coming in and our modeling shows that it's not warranted. But we're close and the thought is, is that with the increase, the expected increase in pedestrian and bicycle activity, when we, when we put in some of these other improvements, that will easily bump us up into what's warranted just because of the increase in pedestrian and bicycle activity. The warrant, signal can be warranted based on, you know, vehicular movements, but also based on pedestrian and bicycle activity. And so the thought is that, well, our expectation is that it would be warranted after we install some improvements that will start making people feel more safe using that area.
There's a, there's a figure that shows the vehicle lanes, it's on page fifty-three and also on seventy-four, it's figure dash, figure four dash two A and five dash one A. And the vehicle lanes are seventeen feet wide compared to what looks like twelve feet wide for the Caltrans shop project.
Well, the, I think that might just be something that's hard to read. There, the, the Caltrans shop project includes twelve-foot travel lanes and the proposed plan shows eleven-foot travel lanes.
Is it eleven?
Mm-hmm. I think the, the ones maybe are a little deceptive.
Why, why the difference?
It's mainly to have the room for the, the improvements that we want to show, but also eleven-foot travel lanes are, are another way we can slow traffic. When you're in a narrower travel lane, you're going to inherently drive slower, so that's part of the thinking as well.
So that's, that's another traffic slower.
Sorry?
That's another thing to slow traffic?
Correct, yes.
Now, the, the total projected cost of these projects, when I added them up, came to fifteen million, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. That sound right?
That sounds like.
Trust your mouth.
Yeah, I'll trust your mouth.
In today's dollars.
Yes.
Now, with, with respect to the, with respect to the Phase one and Phase two crosswalk and traffic light at Penn Gulch and Highway four, was there an analysis done to determine how many children attended the school that attend Mick Michelson or located close enough to walk or bike to school? And their parents would permit them to do that?
Well, I, we don't have, you know, a specific targeted result in that way, but we did get at that kind of information through a variety of methods. We did conduct a parent survey, which, and the results of that survey are shown in Chapter three, the summary of community engagement in chart, figure three, one. And that basically, you know, asked parents, we kept it really simple to make it so we maximize our participation, but we showed, people definitely explained that they don't let their, most parents aren't letting their kids walk to school and some of, sometimes it is travel distance and that's not going to be resolved through any of these improvements, but some of the other factors that keep them from letting their kids walk or bike are addressed through this plan. And we also did a walkability and bikability analysis in Chapter two of the plan, and that's figure two eight, which is on page seventeen, shows walkability and bikability around the school. And what it shows is that there's a lot of residential areas that are within a walkable distance, which is a quarter mile, and a, a bikable distance, which is further, for some reason I'm blanking on those numbers right now, but that, what we showed is that the, there's walkable, the, the people live within a walkable and bikable distance.
Well, but the residential areas include people that don't have children that attend school.
Correct, yeah.
So if you narrow it down to people that have kids that attend the school, then the issue is how many children are we really talking about that would really use that crosswalk? And that's, I can't find it.
We don't have that level of data. We don't know how many households within those walkable and bikable areas have children that are attending school. That data wasn't available.
We, the other thing to consider though is it's not just the school, that Feeny Park is there, that is our, our sports park, that's where all the playing fields are. So it's not even just Murphy's kids, lots of kids are there in and around that area and there is a little mini mart or whatever, I think that's what it's called actually. It's just right across the street from the school. So there actually is quite a bit of older kids going back and forth, not necessarily the elementary school kids that are at Michelson too. I mean, lots, there's other things going on at Feeny Park too, like, you know, now they have a little craft show there in the weekends and people in Murphy's do, there's a lot of walking and bicycling going on all the time. Kids, parents do not let their kids walk to school by themselves for the most part because there really is no good pathway now. There's no sidewalks, there's no nothing. And quite a long time ago, a child was hit and killed on his bike on the side of the road by the school. So that's a very chilling effect on parents allowing their children to walk to school.
Yeah, the principal stated very clearly that, that they discourage people, families who have, on the other side of the highway to have their kids walk to school. And you look at that chart on page forty-seven, it shows the two most common reasons for not walking to school is lack of safe sidewalks and pathways and lack of safe crossing Highway four. So those are the two main reasons that people don't let their kids walk to school. But as Michelle pointed out, there are a number of other people that do walk, they walk to the park, they, you know, you walk to school for other reasons, it's not just the school children.
It's kind of a chicken and egg thing too, is that, who knows how many more people will use Feeny Park if they think, oh, let's just walk to the park instead of let's get in the car and fight the intersection, get over there.
How'd this come into conception or what started the conversation that this needed to be done, who initiated?
It was sort of twofold. One was the COG is always on the lookout for grant opportunities. Caltrans advertises these complete street planning programs that they have to fund these kinds of plans. And then with the knowledge that the shop project was coming on and, and the concern by the community that putting a two-way left, just putting a two-way left turn lane is only going to make it worse. It's going to speed up the traffic through town because the one thing that slows people down now are people making left-hand turns, you have to stop them. And so, but I think it was those, those two issues, you know, there was, there was money available to do the study and the shop program we had heard was coming through. And so we said, now would be a time to look at not just the, the through traffic issue and the left turn lane issue, but look at the whole picture.
The biggest problem I see with the double left-hand turn lanes is very few people know what they're for. We have them in Valley Springs and nobody uses them and it drives me crazy. There's a few, well, thank you. I mean, if you, if you try to pull out a Marvell parking lot and you're turning to the left on twenty-six, people will sit there until there's no traffic coming both ways instead of pulling out of your way into the left turn lane. So if you could send out an educational package along with it, explain how you use them.
So, so I want to second that.
I learned about that.
About what they're for, but in Happy Pines, people think they're passing lanes.
Oh, that's not good either.
But they have a different misunderstanding of them.
But it looks like a wonderful plan for the community.
And then one, one commenter noted in a letter to commission, you know, people don't know how to do, use a four-way stop either, so there's a lot of things that could be, could be done. Unfortunately, we can't solve that problem with this plan.
If everything just clicks, is there any, do you have any idea of, of, first, the, the stop prob, uh, program? That, that could be in the next two years, actually, paint on the ground?
The shop, when it will be done, we're expecting construction, I believe, and we don't want to be quoted, but I'm on record here, twenty twenty-three, I believe, is when we're built.
Twenty twenty-three, okay.
It could be twenty twenty-two because it's how our cycles work. We are right now in the right-of-way phase, making sure we do have all the right-of-way and environmental. And so that's why I just want to touch real quickly, Tony, do you mind if you just go to where the shop, the.
The business?
The aerial view of where the two-way left turn lane will go in. So we will be adding eight-foot shoulders on each side, so it will provide some kind of walkability that isn't there now on the left side of your screen where the fire department is with the open lot. We're going to fill that ditch and we're going to put a pipe in there and then we're going to put some kind of topsoil over it. So it will be an eight-foot shoulder, drainage inlets, and then some kind of dirt shoulder. So that will be better than it is now. We just didn't have the funding to do the sidewalks. We tried to go to the CTC and ask for more allocations for sidewalks, but we weren't granted that money, so the shop didn't get that to put in sidewalks. But it is better than it is now. And on the other side, we will be putting in an eight-foot shoulder. So just want to clarify, and because I've heard it quite a bit and I heard it during the meetings about how the two-way left turn is going to increase speeds and traffic congestion and all the concerns, after we put in the two-way left turn, we will come out, not me, but my engineers will come out six months later to do a basic review, see if what they did has changed for the better, worse, and kind of take a test of the water. During that time, I encourage you, especially because you're the planning commission, Peter or anyone, to contact my office, let them know if it's working, not working, your concerns within that six months, so when they go out, they're not just doing what they see on that day, but they can have a better sense. So that is another opportunity to, to kind of address your concerns in this plan.
Don't you guys, I'm almost positive, but you guys run models on different design aspects throughout projects, which in turn would, would slow down traffic, would, would increase traffic?
Right.
Where the danger points are, that sort of thing, correct?
Right, we did a cost benefit analysis and that's why the two-way left turn lane was the best opportunity for this community because we have multiple side streets that were also being congested, so that's why that was picked. And the signal wasn't because that did not address the entire corridor up to Main Street. That's why we picked that one. When we do come back six months or two years, five years and the traffic has increased, the left turn has increased, more people are crossing, whatever it might be, we go through an ICE process, it's called an intersection control evaluation, and we'll look at roundabouts, a signal or stop signs, and that's another way of looking at the entire intersection. So it's, it's not a done deal. We probably will be coming back and looking at this in the future if changes happen.
So three or four years of the stop program will have happened, do you think?
The, the shop will, yeah, the shop will be constructed in the next three years.
Three years. And then if all goes well, what, ten years down the line from now, we might see at least several of the levels happen? I'm just, I just need to let, let the people know not to get too anxious.
Thanks, Amber Collins, Executive Director with the Calaveras Council of Governments. And I just want to say as the Regional Transportation Planning Agency for the region and the funding partner along with Caltrans, extremely supportive of this plan. And this is the first step and, and really nowadays kind of critical requirement to getting funding for transportation infrastructure projects. So, and the way that we kind of package these up will allow us to go after different grant programs. So as, as different grant programs pop up and, and a funding package A fits in with a particular grant program, then we can seek those funds. And then once those funds are received, then we go through the typical construction project phases, which is, you know, begin with environmental, then you do design and construction. So I, from beginning to end of, of an implementation package, you could be correct, it could be, you know, from five to.
Twenty.
But, you know, optimistically, you know, along, most of these improvements are along the state highway and, and sometimes if there's an operation issue or a safety issue that Caltrans identifies, they come through with their shop program and, and nowadays they're supposed to look at bike, pet improvements. And now that we have the plan, you know, we can work with them on actually incorporating these improvements into their projects as well. So we don't, we're not a hundred percent just dependent on our regional funds or grant funds. We can also partner with Caltrans and that way we can get those done a, a little bit quicker.
If funds became available for Phase G, you'd jump on them, right? I mean, if, you know, if, if your, your priorities are set, but if all of a sudden it appears that you could do something that's down the line, you, you'd go ahead and do it as long as it wasn't dependent upon the previous.
Yeah, I will partner with, with the county. So it'd be, you know, the county decision to initiate a construction project and work with the COG on, on funding for that, but I don't know if Michelle had something on
So I was just going to say, we asked what kind of instigated it, which that's a turn lane.
Is it the safe, safe passage to schools, is that what?
Well, that's been around for a long time. It was really that we knew we were getting this central lane and I heard about it. It was really that we knew we were getting this center lane, and I heard about it, and I was all in a tizzy. And, of course, but these guys are so nice, you call them and they're just calm, and say, oh, we're going to do a study, and we're going to look at it all. But we also wanted to make sure that while they're doing the environmental work and looking at right-of-way right now for this center lane, that we look at, oh, could we get sidewalks in the future, even if we don't have money now? Could we make sure if we do drainage improvements, that we push them far enough out? And just like Kevin was explaining, filling in that ditch and getting that pipe underground is going to make a huge difference in that area, which is so awkward to walk in right now. So, it was an opportunity to get Caltrans to pay for some front-end work as part of this project. We always want to get as much as we can from Caltrans, if they're doing something.
Which reminds me, what has happened, if anything, on the San Andreas plan that we passed a year and a half ago?
Well, I was just going to say, this is very similar.
Can we get to Commissioner's report?
Timeframe, you know, to the plan we adopted a couple of years ago for San Andreas, and we're working on a similar one in Valley Springs right now, that, you know, it takes time. You know, we're, we're looking at some potential grant applications in the near future, that we might be able to see construction in a few years, but, you know, three years after it was adopted, another couple of years to actually get a grant in place or funding in place, and then you've got to go through the, you know, environmental and planning and engineering, and finally, the construction. Eight to ten years is not an outrageous amount of time to get from there.
Amber, again, just, I understand, you know, sometimes these are frustrating processes, but to give you a little motivation, the City of Angels, we did a Main Street corridor plan through their town, and just recently, a year ago, we got one point nine million dollars from the statewide Active Transportation Program to do sidewalk gap fill and implement, actually, some of the improvements, and they're in right-of-way right now. So, that project has actually been expedited, just because that grant program has such tight, timely use of funds deadlines, we had to move really quickly. So, that was a positive, and that came out of one of these planning processes. So, it can happen, and once it happens, sometimes it can happen fast.
And Angels Camp has been proactive, because they got some sidewalk infill projects a few years ago, too.
Yes, and part of that, and probably why Kevin's standing up, is, is they did the planning work, and then Caltrans came through with a project and is incorporating some of the elements from their plan.
Yeah, I'll just touch on that. So, because of this plan in Angels Camp, my agency, I was able to talk to the project manager and show them that on the, I'll call it the west side of the highway, they are looking to put in a vegetation strip that separates the sidewalk from the travel lane, and I asked that in their plan, this is their ultimate goal, what the community wants, could we incorporate that? And through some working and understanding, we were able to, right now, show that's part of the project. That was not originally part of the project, we were just going to do sidewalks. But because we had a plan that was adopted by the county, or sorry, the city and the COG, that was enough reason for us to go ahead and allocate funds. Same thing with San Andreas, I don't want to talk too early about it, but there's some elements that, with the sidewalk, we have the same thing, we have to fix some sidewalk in that location. We know there's gaps, we know there's some needing to be fixed with the crown. We're in the process of kind of going forward and seeing what we can do with a SHOP project that wasn't originally to address that, it was originally just to address sidewalk-in locations. So, these plans in my agency are going a long way, because it's a speaking point that I can have a discussion with someone higher up about how we can allocate our funds to best help the community. So, I encourage you, obviously, to adopt, you know, approve this plan and move forward. Thank you.
My only regret is that there isn't a lot of public members here to see that Caltrans can do good things.
On my record, I'm on TV somewhere.
So, I want to say that, actually, the workshops and the meetings were pretty well attended in Murphy's, especially the early ones where people felt like they really could get their say in, there's a lot of enthusiasm. Anybody else have any questions for any of these folks? Come on.
It's quite a plan. I have a couple of thoughts. One of them is that when I go to Murphy's, I think of a very idyllic nature park feeling. And I understand that PG&E is going to be cutting down trees there, and they're cutting down trees all over the place. And I hope that some of these plans will include replanning trees to try to recover the ambiance that's going to be lost, and also increase the ambiance. And another thought that I had was, in, in Valley Springs, we have a Veterans Memorial District Park, and it's larger than the one that they demolished. And unfortunately, if we had the full capacity, there's not enough places for people to park. And of course, a lot of things that happen there are fundraisers from different organizations, as happens in Murphy's. And the parking, parking places for people to come are crucial to people being able to access whatever's going on. And I hope that you guys will consider that. Also, having bike paths on both sides of the highway, a left turn lane, and two places for people to drive backwards and forwards, that leaves a really wide area. And I would like to see trees planted between the bike paths or the sidewalks, rather than having them all looking, you know, so wide, and it just, it takes away from the ambiance, and I think it takes away from the person that's riding the bicycle, or walking, or driving, not to have trees and vegetation closer to where they're at. Thank you.
If you want to talk to me after the meeting, I'll tell you about the trees in downtown Murphy's. PG&E is not cutting down trees there, but I'll tell you what's happening with that. Do Amber or Kevin have anything to add before the commission?
I'll just add, with the trees, we don't mind having trees or plants being planted along the right-of-way, it really comes down to a maintenance thing, we just don't have the maintenance staff to come out and wire, so that's usually what we ask the county or city to kind of maintain for us. So, that is something, when a development comes through, or if we're doing another SHOP project in the future, we can absolutely discuss improvements like that, just as we're doing in Angels Camp. We would have put the, I don't want to talk about Angels Camp too much, but I believe they're not putting in plants right now, but we're giving the capability for them to be prepared for plants when they're ready. So, that is something, we do want to make sure this is a community field. We do think trees and plants make people slow down, because it kind of widens the view of open road space, like you said. And I just want to add in what I forgot to say, is the current crosswalk at Penn Gulch will be improved to high-visibility paint and being restriped during our SHOP project. So, it is something, we are looking at RRFBs, they're Rapid Flashing Beacons, but I can't guarantee anything at this point, but we are looking to make that a safer spot from the feedback from this grant.
Thank you. All right, and so you can see that during the section through town, they are proposing plantings, separating the walking and biking section from the center section of the highway.
Just had a quick question, being exempt from CEQA, the only reason it's being exempted is because each individual project will go throughout the CEQA process?
Yes, and in fact, primarily, that this does not commit us to any course of action. CEQA requires that we, once we're committed to something, that we have to analyze, or prior to committing to something, there's no, the county's not committed to any financing, this is, you know, a generalized plan of things that we could do to improve things that will help us in the future. So, a combination of yes, we will do analysis of the actual construction projects when those move forward, just as Caltrans is doing that now with the SHOP project, and the fact that this is a generalized planning document that does not commit us to a course of action.
Like, just to distinguish it, the general plan and the community plans are something that projects have to be consistent with, and because they have to be altered as a result of the plan, we have to do CEQA on those. And this, I believe, Mr. Marrow was, we were talking about it before, projects don't have to be consistent with the Complete Streets Plan in order to be approved.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give my quick plea, of course, of course, I support this plan. I would like to see the Planning Commission go ahead and adopt the resolution, because I think that Placeworks did a really great job on it. And the graphics are beautiful, you can understand, and they just facilitated the meetings so well, and really listened to the public. And I also want to thank Amber for getting us the money to do this, helping make it all happen. And Kevin was there, I believe, at every meeting, and was really helpful in giving us guidance as to what was realistic, and what we should go ahead and push for, even though it might be a bit of a challenge to get, really helpful.
Well, I have, I have concerns. I think this may be an example of what is a difficult challenge, kind of a conflict between the interests of people who use the highway, as a through means of traffic and the interest of the community that it goes through. And it looks as if one of the goals, plainly one of the goals, is to slow down, impede the highway four through traffic. I don't think there was a lot of outreach to those people. This was a very community-centered outreach program, which is fine so far as it goes. I also think that with the Caltrans project, there will be improvements, there will be improvements to the crosswalk at Penn Gulch, for example. And there will be the turn lanes and other things, and I think it's better to see how that turns out. None of the highway four crossing improvements are warranted at this time, given the SHOP project. There is a little analysis to determine how many children that attend Michelson would use these crosswalks to get to school. I don't see a lot of analysis for their need for another traffic light at Main Street and Highway Four. This total project is over fifteen and a half million dollars, and somebody has to pay for that. So, I'm, I'm concerned about it.
As far as the funding, if I'm not correct, please correct me if I'm not correct, but if we don't get the funding through COG, somebody, some other jurisdiction or some other county will get that, is that correct? The grant, the...
Yes, I mean, that's, that's a good assessment. You know, after, when we go after these grant programs, if we're not successful, or we don't go after the grant program, then it does go to a different agency or jurisdiction for the city.
Is it a matching fund grant, or is it...
Some grant programs are, but the Active Transportation Program does not require a match, which is the main statewide program that we go after for these types of improvements.
Now, is this funding going to be SB one funding majority, or...
Some could be potentially SB one. Yeah, SB one definitely added an influx of funding to the existing program, so it made it a little bit, I'm not going to say easier for us to do it, but, you know, it's a bigger funding pot now for us to go after these, these funds.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think maybe part of the question that everybody's wondering is, you know, are we thinking that the general fund is going to help pay for this? And I don't think that that's, was the idea, that we would come back to Public Works and say, hey, let's start working on the highway here. I think we understand it's a long, slow process to find funding for the individual projects as it becomes available, and to be competitive for it, if there is an opportunity. Is that right, Amber?
Yeah, I could add a few things. You know, the state and federal government and all the funding programs really look for community-driven and data-driven processes to support infrastructure improvements, and they want to see the benefits to, you know, how much a project costs. And this is actually really good timing with this, this planning project. A lot of projects, before we can go after funding for them, need to be included in our regional transportation plan for the entire county, and now we can fold in these projects in that plan, and they have to be in that plan to get state and federal funding. So, we'll be able to kind of pick and pull these projects to seek state and federal funding. And, you know, it's a good point that Mr. Henderson made about, you know, this is an opportunity to bring some of those SB one funds into our county and bring those benefits to the residents.
I was just thinking about the concerns about slowing down traffic for people on the highway there, but that's unfortunately what you run into in any small community. I did a lot of commuting over the years, and I just learned to adjust my commute time based on the traffic I was going to run into in the small towns that I had to travel through. I understand the concern, but you also have the community concern. You have people's safety and, you know, because the only way you're going to solve, solve the problem of people being able to commute along that highway faster is if you had a bypass, and that's not what we're discussing. We're discussing what this community needs. And, I mean, I understand both the concerns, but I would be in favor of what the community needs are. I mean, a similar thing in Valley Springs, you know, a lot of people would like to see a bypass there because of the traffic congestion that we have in the middle of town, but we have to do the best of what we can for the community to make that safe and make traffic move, and balance those two, and it looked like there's a pretty good balance in this plan, especially once the plan is complete. I think if anything, you're probably, if you put in your left turn lanes, and the first things you put in, you can actually probably see an increase in speed temporarily, until other things are done. And, you know, maybe somewhere down the future, they're going to have to look at a bypass on some of these communities, but that's not what we're looking at today. So, I would side in favor of the project.
I think it's a win-win. I think that the people using the highway will benefit from the increased safety of not, not being, not only in danger of being rear-ended when people are trying to make a left turn, say, at Main Street in the, in the traffic lane, and also safe from getting involved in situations that are dangerous to pedestrians and bicyclists and other people in the community. Well, we're talking like a five-block area, we're not talking about getting all the way across Hayward. And I really think that a delay that would result from this plan, even though it's stated as slowing down the traffic on Highway Four is one of the goals, we're talking maybe a fifty-second delay, well, if you get caught by both lights, maybe a minute's delay. I think this is a, is a plan that will make Calaveras County as a whole more of a place that people want to come and want to be a part of, and drive through, for that matter, even if they're just going up to Lake Alpine from, from Desto. They're going to have a much better feeling about Murphy's, I think, than they would now if they're just driving through. So, I, I think it's a marvelous plan, and I hope it can find its funding sometime in this century.
And just a question, comment on the speed of traffic through Murphy's, my understanding is, what is the speed limit now, is, is thirty-five, but people are not traveling that, they're traveling much faster? We're not talking about changing the speed limit from fifty-five through Murphy's down to thirty-five, we're trying to say, you know, this is what it is, please travel the speed limit. Being one that's almost been run off the road a number of times on Highway twenty-six between Toyon and Moke Hill, for people that just don't want to drive the speed limit, I, people need to... need to learn to drive the speed limits if you live up in, in areas like this. It just, it's different, you know, if you're out on I-5 and, and people are going 80 and you don't want to be run over, that's different. But up here, I think we should slow down a little bit, enjoy the scenery.
So I'm actually one of the people who drives through Murphy's because I actually live in Hathaway Pines.
At what speed?
I drive pretty slowly because I used to live in Murphy's. But, so I, I'm, I understand Commissioner Wooster's concerns. However, I believe that the community needs outweigh the need of primarily tourists to get to the skiing five minutes earlier, you know. And, and right now, with the situation we have in Murphy's and so much tourism and so much traffic on weekends there, that, that center lane, which is not a pretty thing, is really going to help traffic flow through much better. We actually have right there by the gas station, mini-mart school kind of area is where we have all our fender benders because people get tired of waiting, or they pull out, or who knows, or they're going to be much faster than 35 through the middle of town. So I think this is a great balance of, yes, we need to accommodate that traffic, but we also need to keep it feeling like a small community. Are we ready to hear the resolution?
So staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2019-023, recommending the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution defining the project to be exempt from CEQA and adopting the Murphy State Route 4 Complete Streets Plan.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 29023.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So the resolution is approved on a 4-1 vote with Commissioner Wooster opposed. And where the heck are we on our agenda? Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Commissioner reports?
None for me. None? Nope.
I have nothing to say. Does the Planning Director have anything he'd like to share?
Just a couple of quick items. Probably all aware that the Board will be hearing the general plan beginning next Tuesday. Plan for at least two days of hearings, Tuesday and Wednesday, potential for continued hearing to the 14th of August if necessary to do vacations after next Wednesday. And that's really all I have to say.
Do you, can you give us any idea of when we might be considering cannabis ordinance?
Because this wasn't a long enough meeting.
One day at a time there, Tim.
We are shooting for, but I'm not going to guarantee that that will be the date, August 22nd, August 20, second meeting last.
The draft is currently being vetted with other department heads. Anything else major coming up?
Let's see, we've done general plan, housing element, cannabis ordinance. Maybe we can take a break for a while, yeah.
Well, you know, once that general plan has been adopted, I'm gonna be so anxious to get this...
Well, the Board has also directed us to bring back revisions of dispensary ordinance. So that will be coming up, and then general plan implementation will certainly be top on my list.
And a dark sky ordinance, perhaps? Just have an easy one.
Part of the implementation. If you'd like, we can have a discussion, study session on implementation, and you can make your recommendation to the Board as to what you think is the top priority.
Okay, we are adjourned at 3:22. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, sign something, right?